Okay. Dave, are you there?
He's sleeping here.
Need to hear him now.
Sorry, Drake, you there? I'm here now. Yeah, sorry. I was unmuted, didn't realize it.
It's good now?
Yep.
Okay. And I'll declare a special small cities committee meeting open. It's Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. We're at City Hall Auditorium. It's 5:15 or so. Okay, we have three items to discuss here. Present, we have myself, Rick Waldron in person, and then Zoom, we have Dave Oliver. There's our quorum. Okay, number one, Small Cities, 26 Hodges Hill Road, Vote to approve the installation of an auxiliary generator. 26 Hodges Hill Road. Okay. Okay, so. All right, so Councilman Oliver moves it. I second. Dan, you gonna join us? Yes. Stephen, Dan Farley is now joining the meeting.
Just one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Our total value, what's the total value of the project? The resident.
So, can I interject?
Sure.
So, there's, there's two different projects tonight that what they're looking to do with their homes don't generally fall into what Department of Housing authorizes for approval for small, small city loans.
Yep.
So, but one of them, the individual has, she's on oxygen and.
This is the one.
That's the one you're discussing right now. Okay. She loses power frequently.
I read that, yeah.
And she concerns a matter of life or death.
Yes.
Is, is her.
Serious health risk.
So, Peter Testa, in order for him to present it to the state to ask if they'll make an exception for this project.
Yeah.
It needs to be preauthorized by the Small Cities Committee first in order to take that step for him to go and discuss it with the state.
Okay, so.
And it'll come back to you for.
With a dollar amount on it.
With a dollar amount and the other information that you need to look at it again before it goes.
Okay.
Out to bill.
This is just a reauthorization essentially.
Yeah, we're pre-authorizing this. And then it'll come back to us later.
Okay.
With a dollar amount on it. But she has equity in the House here, say over 100,000, so. I think we're good. Okay. Any further discussion?
No, I'll move it.
Okay, well, you already did.
Give me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number one passes, so. We're approving it. We'll go on the money later. Okay, number two, Small Cities, 64 Albany Street, Project Number 143-SC1801-36. Vote to approve the replacement of the house and garage roof and gutters, installing a new garage overhead door and replacing the garage floor slab at 64 Albany Street. Okay. All right, this one.
No.
I don't see a value on this either.
No, this, this is the other project that falls under the same guideline.
Oh, it's two out of three. Okay, so we're preapproving this. And this, this taxpayer has over $32,000 in equity, and of course, that's just on the assessor's card.
Right.
I was a sell for a lot more than that these days. Okay. By the way. Dave, did you move, move number two?
I did. I moved it. Sorry about that, if you didn't hear.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number two passes. All right, number three, Small Cities, 29 Ygold Road, Project Number 143-P-L-52. Vote to approve the replacement of the roof and gutters at 29 Ygold Road.
So move.
Okay, I second. Okay, some motion by Councilman Oliver, second by Councilman Waldron. Discussion. By the way, I said P L, is that P I? The letter, I might have, I might have read the letter. For the project. Okay. Says. Estimated cost here is fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars. Person has a house worth 216, $51,000, $55,000 in liens, so a lot of equity.
Okay, so the backstory on this one is that the, the individual or insurance company came out and did an inspection, pre-inspection on the home prior to authorizing a renewal of their insurance policy. They discovered that the roof was in bad shape and they gave her a deadline to meet to get the roof work done or her insurance is going to be kinked.
Yeah.
Love how they do that.
Yeah.
Okay, we got the idea. Okay.
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Okay. That's approved. Okay, number four, adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Okay.
I'm ready. Okay, we're live. All right, so it is now 5:31 PM. And we have on our first lineup of meetings this evening, a special joint meeting with the City Council and the Board of Finance. For the record, today is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. We have council members and Board of Finance members attending both remotely and in person. So for the record, representing the City Council in person, I have Councilman Waldron, Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino. Participating via Zoom, I have Councilman Oliver. So that is a quorum of the Board, of the City Council. Attending in person, representing the Board of Finance, I have Board of Finance member Deb Iannacito, Lorraine Pesky, Wendy Trab, and Jim Wright. And participating via Zoom, I see Chris Bayes is also in attendance. I also see, I recognize the phone number, participating via Zoom or available via Zoom to answer any questions, I have Attorney Sandra Dawson from Pullman and Conlee. So, before we get into the agenda items, if we could stand and pledge the flag. Okay, for discussion purposes, I'm going to call Agenda Number, Agenda Item One. Review and discuss Resolution Number 143-252 regarding the approval of an additional $6 million appropriation, of which $5,100,000 is expected to be financed by state grants with no additional amount of bonds or outdoor athletic bonds for outdoor athletic facilities to be included in the current THS TMS construction project. Do I have that motion?
So move.
Second. I heard Councilwoman Iveyne, I heard Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments before I call the motion? Seeing and hearing none, again, it's a joint meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm gonna jump in first and just give a little bit of a background because we do have many new council members, some new Board of Finance members. And for anybody that is reading a newspaper, I think it was clear as mud as to what really needs to happen to secure or move forward with any, any additional improvements to the athletic fields above the 179 million, $575,000 that was approved by the voters. I want to go on record that Representative Cook, who is not here this evening, has done an incredible job going after not only an 85% reimbursement for the entire school construction, but she did fight pretty hard to get this additional acknowledgement or approval of the $6 million. I think there were a couple of little missteps along the way, not her fault by any stretch of the imagination, but the way it was written in the statute became a little bit complicated. And for the Building Committee members that are here, I know the co-chairman, myself, our Bond Council and Representative Cook spent a number of hours on the phone and then emails trying to get this cleared up. So, by way of history, in November of 2020, the voters of the city of Torrington approved the expenditure of up to $159,575,000 for the construction of a new high school slash middle school. In January 20, on January 25th, 2022, the voters again approved an additional $20 million for an increase of the projected costs of constructions, keeping in mind this was the pandemic. There were a lot of, excuse me, issues with supply chain and cost escalation. So, in January 2022, the voters again overwhelmingly said, yes, let's spend the extra 20 million. And now the costs of construction was capped at $179,575,000. In June of 2023, the City Council authorized an application for a SIF 2030 grant in the sum of $4,578,100 to complete upgrades to the proposed athletic field improvements, this is turf field lighting sidewalks, that were included in the original school construction plan. Again, I want to make it clear. Improvements to the athletic complex will happen. What the Building Committee was looking for were enhancements and improvements to the proposed improvements or the proposed new athletic facilities. Correct. An additional 4.5 million. That grant, highly competitive, a very competitive grant round, despite the fact that we are a distressed municipality. Unfortunately, the grant was not funded. The Building Committee, Board of Education, and City went back at it in November of 2023 and refiled a second application in the amount of $5,661,184 for the same upgrades. You know, they were looking to do everything above what was originally proposed in the school construction project. Unfortunately, again, that grant was not funded. In May of 2024, at the end of the legislative session, Representative Cook was successful in getting language added to Public Act Number 24-151, which was signed into law by Governor Lamont. Section 188 of that act confirms that the total school construction costs approved by the state is capped at $179,575,000. However, the new language does state that the otherwise ineligible expenses for the athletic fields, including turf fields, would qualify for the 85% reimbursement. Immediately, my office was being inundated with questions about the Public Act and whether or not this triggered an additional referendum. We reached out to, Dan Farley, the City Treasurer, and I reached out to Attorney Dawson for some guidance and advice. And we then proceeded to start communication via Representative Cook for some clarification. On June 3rd, and you'll see copies of the, all the emails that I'm referencing are attached to this discussion document. So on June 3rd, an email from Ella Sun, Director of Grants Administration, facilitated by Representative Cook, confirmed that the language in the Public Act does not change the total project costs, which remain at $179,575,000. In her opinion, she thought it would not trigger a local referendum, but did state that the district should rely on its council on that point. On June 12th, Attorney Sandra Dawson confirmed that the city does need voter approval to increase the total project costs to $185,575,000. Again, that email is attached. And a number of additional emails going back and forth. Again, gratitude to Representative Cook because she really was per sepheres in keeping this on the front burner for us. And facilitated a joint phone call, which I took at a beach near Ganse while I was on vacation. A 10-minute phone conversation that ended up being almost 90 minutes. But that phone, that telephone conversation was followed up by an email from Amy LaChance, dated 7/19/2024. It's a lengthy email, but the highlights of that email confirm that PA 25-141 authorizes the reimbursement for up to $6 million in otherwise ineligible expenses related to the athletic fields, including turf. It also provides for 85% as a reimbursement rate. I bolded the sentence. This, and it's, I did highlight it, I'm sorry, for the members of the two boards, this provision may have been written under the assumption that the $6 million for athletic field improvements was already part of the existing project. In other words, they did, the way it was written did not anticipate this was $6 million above the capped 179,575. She further states that the additional $6 million could be added to the total project costs administratively via submission of a DAS Form 1049, and that this administrative request for change would not require any special legislation. Ms. LaChance then opines on the issue of a local referendum referencing the local share after school construction grants would be $45,815,269. And I added here, that's the amount that was authorized to be borrowed or bonded for the project. However, she does not address the fact or acknowledge the fact that the voters voted on a total project cost over the two referendums of 179,575. The final email attached to these talking points comes from Attorney Sandra Dawson, dated 8/2024. After reviewing Ms. LaChance's email and having participated in all of the discussions leading up to that email, Attorney Dawson did advise that for us to accomplish the $6 million increase for the turf fields, athletic complex improvements would require first that the School Building Committee file a DAS Form 1049, I think there's supposed to be an R after that, and second, that the city must hold a referendum to solicit voter approval of the increased, the increase of the total project costs from 179,575 to 185,575. In her email, she then goes on, and this is something that the City Treasurer, myself, Sandra, Representative Cook, really wanted to stress and oppress upon the voters. In the explanatory text, which is not the question on the ballot, the explanatory text is a document that is provided to the voters, so they have a little background as to what is it that they are voting on. There's a simple question, it's a yes or no question, but there's a lot behind that question. So, so we would be working very, very carefully with Attorney Dawson to make sure that the explanatory text on the ballot would explain that there, that the additional project costs will not increase the amount of borrowing or bonding that was previously authorized in the two referendums. So that in a nutshell is where, how we got to where we are. I am going to say it, I am a little disappointed, the newspaper article that ran over the weekend made it sound like Representative Cook and I were at odds on this. I will tell you, Representative Cook and myself have been in close communication every step of the way on this. And while none of us really wants to think about a referendum for this, I think that the communication and the advice of council leads us to the only conclusion that a referendum has to happen. With that, I'm gonna open the floor for questions, and I want to make sure that Attorney Dawson is on the call and unmuted. So. Sandra Dawson is Okay. The floor is open for questions.
So my, my question is, why is the $6 million being included in full value that that is being bonded either state or Torrington? If we look at the total construction projects, sometimes you have to make changes during a construction project. And isn't this a grant by the state, not necessarily a bond by the state?
This is not a grant from the state. It is an authority to increase the project costs. This is not a grant. The school construction reimbursement will cover 85% of it, but this is considered part of the school construction and falls under that. And that's why it requires additional referendum.
And we, we have this email from Ella Sun explaining that in the notes that were shared with us. She, being the grant person, she doesn't believe it needs to go to referendum under these conditions. Stating that it's already incorporated into the cost that went through the referendum process. So can you explain why is our take different than Ella Sun's, who's the grant person managing?
Ella Sun's, Ella Sun's first sentence in her June 3rd, 2024 email states, "The language in PA 24-151, Section 188, does not change the total project costs, which remain at $179,575,000." That's what the state authorized to be spent on the project. That's what the voters of Torrington authorized to be spent on the project. The $6 million is above and beyond the 179,575.
And why couldn't we just say that's separate from the original referent, building referendum?
Because it's part of school construction, which falls under the purview of the project. Which is why it qualifies for the 85%. And again, I think it should not be wasted on anybody. 85% reimbursement is unheard of. And so, putting this under that school construction, getting 85% reimbursement is a big win.
Well, yes, we, we love 85%. Just going, it just seems the grant writers proposing that, you know, it's not required. And I'm wondering why we're putting it through a referendum process if.
She, this is not a grant writer, this is an administrator with DAS, Office of Grants Administration.
Yes.
She's not a lawyer. And if you also read in here, although it does not seem to us that this language and increased reimbursement would trigger a local referendum, keep in mind, she thinks that this is a reimbursement of $6 million within the original scope of the work, the 179,575. If that was the case, if this was $6 million that's included in the 179, she's right, wouldn't need a referendum. It's $6 million above the 179,575. But then she further states that the district should rely on its council for that point. So, to answer your question in two parts, Ms. Sun was assuming the $6 million was a part of the 179,575 that had been approved by the state and approved by our voters. But it is in fact $6 million above.
See. Okay.
Oh, Ms. Pesky.
So, $6 billion, 85%, that leaves a difference.
Of about a million.
What happens? How? Where does that money come from?
So that nine, I know I'm looking across the room at our Building Committee, that additional funding, the 15%, which would be covered by the taxpayers, would become the local share, is either going to be absorbed in all of the other construction costs or worst-case scenario, and I know that there's been discussion by the Building Committee co-chairs that they were going to do everything they could to make sure that that extra $900,000 did not to be expended, but the fact of the matter is, we have authority to spend it.
We have authority to bond and borrow. But if we don't spend it, then isn't it only 85% of a lower amount? And so there's still more money that the city has to come up with. So, where's, it, it's a catch 22.
I, I had believed there was a net wash because there was costs to build the turf fields. Because we, the grass fields. And the turf fields, the way.
More expensive.
Now would be a net wash with this opportunity.
Can someone from? Yeah, Ms. Arum, do you wanna? Yeah, thank you.
As you realize, when we went out to bid, it was for the grass field. But if we, we're not doing the grass field on the, and I can, one second. On the schedule of values, it lists everything for the grass field. Natural ath, a natural athletic field baseball multipurpose, 220,000, we save that. Natural athletic field irrigation, 250,000, save that. Natural athletic field varsity and JV softball, 200,000, that's a savings. Natural athletic field for the varsity baseball, 180,000. Topsoil field materials, we don't need topsoil, 530,000. Topsoil for field replacement, 175,000, that totals 1.5 million. Contingency, let's say if we, something happens, 300,000, 1.2 million. Those are all in the statement of values, which we have to require every contractor.
And while he's thumbing through those pages, I think also there's a loss of, I was going to say, while you're thumbing through your pages, the loss of the use of the fields for a period of time after construction.
Yes. On page 13, put it in yellow, and I give you a copy, Mayor, if you want, of all the things that I said that we don't have to do because it's a grass field, we're putting it in turf. That's why Marion and I wanted that, make sure it wasn't coming out of anything, it's coming out of a credit that CJ Fuji will give us.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Pesky?
Yes and no. It's a lower amount, but we're still only getting 85% of it, but we're saving more than what would the 900,000.
Correct.
If you total up all those.
Correct.
Those amounts. Those amounts.
We did not want taxpayers to pay any money. We went to the, uh, field, went through everything on, on his schedule of values, which is the new, but the old and the new Bible, which you call it, okay? So that's what we go by, listed there. He has to give credit for all that stuff.
Could that be included in the background for this, um, before? When, when there's the minutes for this?
Yes.
That that information is here, so depending on how the vote goes.
Okay.
Um, that, that we, that we understand that that money, there's more money there than is needed to cover the obligation that the city would have because eighty-five percent of six million dollars is not a hundred percent of six million dollars.
Right. So yeah, if you wanna get it to Carol, she can make a part of the minutes. Thank you.
Mayor, it's Chris Bayes, if I have the floor.
Sure, please.
Um, more probably so a question for Mr. Arum and Mr. Longabucco, if they're there. You know, my general concern here is not so much playing with the money now, putting it here, putting it there, saving. Um, you know, what's the long-term average cost of maintaining a turf field versus a uh, natural grass field? I, I know what we, the facility we have now, um, the board sets aside quite a pretty penny to, uh, to maintain that every five or 10 years. I think it's a million dollars every 10 years. So, you know, what are we getting ourselves into here, um, down the road? Cause that's something I need to look at. Um, you know, as far as making all these fields turf versus, you know, natural grass.
The turf field that we have now is, uh, maintenance, maintenance, six thousand dollars a year. If we want a G max study, which we do every four years, it's an additional six hundred and fifty thousand. The new turf fields would be seventeen thousand dollars a year. I have a, uh, email from Field Turf. Give you a copy. Two baseball fields, three thousand dollars per field, six thousand dollars annually. Two softball fields, three thousand dollars per field annually, six thousand dollars. And then one multi-field, twenty-five hundred dollars per visit. We figure it's two visits would give seventeen thousand dollars for that whole complex maintenance a year.
So, so why are we budgeting so much for our current turf field? What's, what's different about these new turf fields?
I think.
Mayor, I don't know if you have the budget book in front of you, but.
I don't know, but I'm assuming you're talking about the one hundred thousand dollars of sticking funds.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
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 We, uh, when I was involved, uh, we put away six hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of the original field here.
Right. So every, every ten, what is it, 10 years, that those fields are all gonna have to be replaced, correct?
It's, this, this, uh, if you go up to the field, people have said it looks brand new. Fourteen years, it's, what is it? Uh, twelve, what, year eleven? Go up there, it's beautiful.
Oh, I, I.
Six thousand dollars a year, it's gonna last fifteen years.
I, I've seen it, but I've also seen the budget and I know that we budget quite a hefty amount of money to maintain it, as we should maintain our things. Um, but if, you know, if it needs a six hundred thousand dollar replacement every 10 years or whatever the year is, I think that's something that we need to consider.
And again, I would remind the, um, boards that that hundred thousand dollars a year is a capital reserve for replacement at the end of its life. That is, that is a judgment call that the Board of Ed has been making over the last six years. It is not a requirement that they sink that hundred thousand a year.
Right, Mayor, but now, now if we're all turf fields, that hundred thousand dollars that we put aside in capital every year is gonna have to turn into what? Four hundred thousand dollars a year? Five hundred thousand dollars a year?
Well, come on up. Hi, Chris. Mario.
Hi, Mario.
Um, this newest generation of fields that they're quoting to install is a shelf life of fifteen to seventeen years. So we anticipate to get at least that much and, um, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but, uh, the only way to fund the replace, first of all, the fields won't wear out at the same pace, right? Soccer and football are definitely gonna wear out sooner than a girl's softball diamond or two girls softball diamond in this case. So they won't, you're not gonna replace every field all at once. Uh, the Board of Ed, um, again, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but will continue to maintain the fields and, and the city will have to bond something like this if you ever did it all at once. I don't ever see it getting done all at once.
Right. But even, even so, even if we don't do it all at once, that line item is gonna have to increase to maintain these fields significantly.
Uh, if you're, well, if you're putting money aside.
If we don't do them all.
If, if you're putting, if you're money, putting money aside year by year, you'll have to put away the proper amount of money. If you're bonding.
In every fiscal year.
Yeah, you just schedule that. If, it's no different than replacing a rooftop unit, um, you know, a, a, a road. Um, you, you forecast the expenses that are forthcoming and, and you build it into your, your capital budget over.
Right, but we're adding.
Five to ten years.
Yes, but, yeah, but we're, but we're adding now more, you know, more expensive capital items to go ahead and maintain. I mean, we're not making new roads to maintain. We have to maintain what we have, is my, is my point.
Well, a six million dollar turf field is not a six million dollar turf field to replace. For instance, Watertown just replaced their, uh, football soccer field for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. That's, that was a three and a half million dollar field. You're, when you replace a turf field, they suck up the pellets. They put down new carpet, they put the pellets back down. It's, it's not, the money is all in the drainage down below the field and so on and so forth. So this is not another six million dollars seventeen years.
Right, I'm not expecting it to, no, no, I'm not expecting it to cost another six million. But if, if that line item now goes from, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year to five hundred thousand dollars a year to, to maintain those fields and make sure we have capital funds set aside to do those, you know, six, seven hundred thousand dollar improvements, I understand it's not gonna cost millions to, um, do that. But now we're looking at, you know, a four, five hundred percent increase, um, in, in capital for, for the new school facility. So, you know, I, I, I think it's, I think they're beautiful and I think the eighty-five percent reimbursement's great. I think my only concern, um, and just so you guys know, and just, you know, in general, I, I don't think it's gonna matter for this referendum. Um, but, um, that's a concern of mine, um, is, is the capital outlay for, for these fields.
Yeah, I mean, and, and you should factor in there the savings that occur yearly from not mowing them, not painting the lines, not fertilizing, although fertilizing is very difficult in a middle school, on a middle school campus. I don't even think you could do it. Has to be organic. Um, so what's the number from Field Turf?
Not, well, two. One second.
Uh, for the maintenance portion.
Yep, yep. Well, Field Turf for our maintenance is seventeen thousand, but if you look at, it's about ninety thousand dollars if it's a grass field a year.
Right, that's mowing, overseeding.
Irrigation.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
The irrigation's gonna have to run now that we have some. Um, so there's, there's costs that have to be deducted, um, when you're making those calculations as well.
Well, what's the difference in playtime?
Oh, two years. Three, at least two or three growth seasons. So it'll be, if the field is planted, uh, geez, if it's planted in November of next year or October of next year, you won't, if you're lucky, you'll get on it the, uh, spring of twenty-six.
Yeah, but just even with grass fields, I just remember having, uh, rainy seasons and not being able to go out on those fields.
Oh, no.
For long periods of time and then you find out your competing teams have turf fields.
The, um, the, the reality of situation is we're introducing, you know, four to six new teams with the middle school being on campus. And it's just, the grass just won't hold up. Um, and, you know, we have to be honest, we, we don't, we don't take care of it. We, we just don't take care of it. Um, our maintenance right now is limited to mowing it. And, you know, Dean Pragola will tell you that. We do, we don't maintain the fields. The girls playing, uh, eight inch tall, yellow dandelions with a yellow softball. It's, it's, uh, it, I think it's the right thing to do, given the money we spent on the campus, but that's for you guys to decide and the voters.
Uh, I think Ms. Trab had her hand up a while ago. Let me just try to call these in order.
Thank you. Um, and I appreciate, uh, Board of Finance member Bayes asking that question because that was gonna be one of my biggest questions. Obviously, anytime we introduce something like this, there will be an additional cost down the road. And of course, as a Board of Finance member, that's what I'm concerned with. How do we budget for this now? To say, um, you know, as, as they're talking about now, yes, there's costs during the year, but there's also gonna have to be money put away for the cost of the quote, replacement of artificial turf. The more artificial turf we have, the more replacement. And nobody knows what the cost of anything is gonna be 10 years from now. That's part of the problem with, with I'm struggling with is, we don't know. We, we could assume that it's going to be a certain amount. It could get better. It could get worse. And so, um, that is my fears. How do we ensure that if we vote on this to bring this all into fruition, that money will be put away every year? And the question is, if that's, I'm assuming, because it's part of the Board of, Board of Ed project, it will be the Board of Ed's responsibility to put away that, correct? Not the city's?
So, um, because these, all of the facilities are owned by this city, school construction, roof replacement, window replacement, uh, all of those, while they are capital projects, they actually are part of the city's, um, responsibility to make sure that those improvements happen. How have we been doing that? We've been doing that with bonding lately. You know, we bonded the middle school roof. Uh, we, um, you know, we're bonding this construction. So it would happen one of two ways. It's built into the Board of Education's capital budget, uh, you know, we could insist that, um, you know, they have to carry the cost of that. Those capital budgets, as you know, are only five-year projections. You know, if you really wanna approach this the right way, uh, on the city side, we could do, you know, a fifteen-year appropriation in a capital reserve for that. Um, but anticipating the next question is, you know, where, where do we draw the line? Is it the turf field? Is it the next roof that needs to be done, which I believe is the Vogel Wetmore roof? Is it, you know, there are capital projects that need to be done, but the Board of Finance is absolutely right to ask these questions. How are we gonna make sure that we're not facing another referendum to replace a field? Fifteen or twenty years from now.
Right, and, and for me, obviously, um, capital projects that deal with a, a structure would be a priority. Obviously, if you have a roof that's leaking on a school building or whatever, that would have to be a consideration. Um, I am personally against borrowing. Um, that's one of my biggest pet peeves is I think, you know, we need to plan for projects. Obviously, this was already approved for bonding, for borrowing, so I was happy to hear that we would not have to increase it. Um, I was not here during that. I'm assuming the forty-five million in bonding was because they assumed the reimbursement rate was gonna be a lot lower.
Considerably lower, yes.
Yeah, cause that's about twenty-five percent as of fifteen.
Yeah, we were looking at a little, uh, over seventy-four percent at the time of the referendum in twenty twenty.
I mean, it is great that they gave the information about the schedule of values for the cost that quote, would be saved because they wouldn't be doing natural grass. Um, but I always say, just because you have approved borrowing, doesn't mean you have to borrow. So I struggle with that in, in, in light of what's just happened over the last two months with electricity costs, my fear always was the taxpayers. We're already suffering from, you know, what I said before with the cost of food and everything. And now in the last two, two, three weeks, we're hearing everybody complain about they're not gonna be able to pay their electricity bill. In those terms, why would we be spending taxpayer money on fake grass? I guess is my, my problem with that going forward. So I don't know. I, I don't know how I feel about it personally. Again, I'm, I'm against borrowing, but I know it's a necessity when you do a capital project. Clearly, it has to be. I don't feel, I used to say this on the Board of Education, I believe there's wants, needs and necessities. And when you look at the school construction project, the necessity might have been, we need a new school. You know, it's falling apart, it's outdated technology, everything. And, and the needs might have been things to fill the school with. I think this is a want. So I'm, I'm think I'm, I'm less inclined to, to go forward with it. That being said, I have to weigh, like, you know, we just got all this information right now. I have to weigh in the end, does it, does it get absorbed in there? Does it not affect us all? I, my concern is the future, I think. I'm more concerned about what happens in the next 10 years when we're budgeting every year. We just had to cut everybody's budgets again this year. What's gonna happen next year when the bonding goes into full force? Are we gonna have to cut budgets again? And will they or will the city be able to fund this every year? Or will we be borrowing money to put plastic grass back in 10 years from now? So that's all. I'm just kind of figuring that out.
And, and, and I, you know, and, and Mayor, you know, I, I, I hear, um, Ms. Trab's sentiment on this and, um, it, I, I'm gonna stay consistent with what I've always said throughout this project is, at the end of the day, these are taxpayer dollars, right? So, um, I, I think we do, um, you know, need to ultimately, you know, let the taxpayers decide this. Um, you know, but, uh, you know, it's, I think it needs to be very clearly communicated, um, that this is gonna increase the project cost. And while it may not increase the bonding amount that we're going for, it is gonna increase, you know, the Board of Ed's taxpayer portion, um, that has to go to maintaining these fields. Um, these are real life realities of, of having really nice things. And I think everybody wants really nice things. Um, and I agree that our kids deserve them. Um, but, uh, you know, that it, it needs to be fully explained that there, these things are going to cost the taxpayers money. So, um, like I said, I, I think at the end of the day, this is the taxpayers' decision, not just some of us sitting on a board. But, um, that's, that's my sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, did I see your hand up?
I appreciate, uh, Mrs. Trab's comments and Mr. Bayes's comments, but I think ultimately it's the taxpayers that decide. And the question before us is whether we're gonna vote for a referendum or not vote for the referendum. So the questions of the continuing expenses are something the Board of Finance takes up at another time or that taxpayers are aware of that, obviously. My only question would be if we didn't vote for the referendum, what are the implications of that? What does that mean if we?
Yeah, so, and I'm, I'm, I'm eyeing the, the board building committee chairs. Yeah, if this referendum didn't pass, um, with the grass, with what was proposed. Right. Thank you. Other, Ms. Pesky, you had your hand up again.
But didn't you say that it's less expensive to maintain a turf field than a grass field? Okay, so we're saving money each year that way, which we put aside to replace the field eventually. I mean, every field will have to be replaced at some point, whether it's grass or whether it's turf. It just.
Well, I would think so, but I've been playing most field in those years old.
Ever grass. Well, I, I do have an.
Mayor, I'm having a hard time hearing whoever was speaking. I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, that was Mario. Yeah, he was.
Yeah, I couldn't hear Mario.
Speaking from the seats instead of the microphone. If you don't mind, thank you.
Get up to the mic, Mario.
Right. Chris, I was saying that, um, that, well, the, the fields aren't really improved ever, right? To Ms. Pesky's point, uh, we would have to maintain or replace every field of every type. But the grass fields, in truth, haven't been maintained at all. I've been playing there my whole life, um, since I was a little kid, growing up in that neighborhood. Um, and, um, my second point was that it's a, it's, it's, it's not like a community grant like we got in the stadium field, but it's a community project. It's, it's for every single park and rec program and every citizen in town to play up there. And if, if anybody goes up to that turf fields at the high school, it gets use pretty much twenty-four, seven.
If I might, to that point though, even the grass field. uh, even the grass fields, uh, every now and then, um, do need to be replaced. Did we not just spend a considerable amount of money replacing the girls' softball?
That was the clay. That was the clay on the field twice. Um, so to give you an idea of those ongoing maintenance costs, which you don't have with turf, Dean spent $12,000 a year, uh, and John Barlow spent $12,000 year, the year before that, I believe, uh, to replace the softball diamond, um, clay last year. Yeah.
Yeah, I think a few years ago, though, a, a much larger investment was made.
We had to bring the diamonds up, uh, Title IX, you know, dugouts, fencing, things like that.
And the only reason I bring that up is when you talk about, you know, a turf field that may have a 15 to 17-year lifespan, or a grass field that may have a 10 to 15-year lifespan, there will be continuing replacement regardless whether it's turf or grass. Granted, grass may be a little less expensive, but there will always be replacement costs.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're looking at is if you really want nice grass fields, you have to spend money every single year, year in, year out, run the water, fertilize it as best you can within Connecticut statutes and, uh, maintain it, mow it. So you have the ongoing expenses versus the big pain at the end of replacing the turf. And I think, again, the one thing you should really keep in mind is there's just no way those turf fields are all going to wear out at the same time. They'll wear out at different paces.
All right, more questions?
Yes. Does the, does a turf field become more attractive to holding tournaments here?
Oh, absolutely.
And things like that, that are also beneficial to the city?
Absolutely. I've heard Mr. Cavanero say many times he wants Torrington to be a, a tournament-ready field, a tournament-ready city. And that'll do that. With these two turf softball diamonds, in addition to what we have with Park and Rec, we'll have a half a dozen softball diamonds. We'll have four to six soccer fields. Uh, we'll have, uh, Fuchsia's Park, two beautiful baseball fields up there and the Babe Ruth League Field. So absolutely, um, it would definitely, definitely do that. If someone wants to, you know, take that initiative to organize those tournaments, whether that's Pal Varcela nightclub or whoever that is, yes. You know, our most, I, our most difficult part of that is hotel rooms, um, which is another issue altogether.
Oh, look, a squirrel.
That's to state the obvious.
I'm sorry.
But yes, it does help a lot.
Can you give us, or perhaps can, um, Attorney Dawson, give us the, a hint on what the wording of the ballot?
Yes.
Would be?
Yeah, so, um, Sandy, if you're unmuted, I know, um, Ms. Attorney Dawson also wanted to talk a little bit about, um, you know, when you're sinking funds for a project that may be 15 or 20 years out, you know, what your fiduciary responsibility is for spending or collecting current tax dollars for something that those taxpayers may never be able to enjoy 20 years from now. So I, I'll let her talk a little bit about that public policy piece as well as your questions. So Attorney Dawson.
So the, yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
The, um, question that'll be on the ballot is in the resolution, which should be in your package. Because what you, the referendum.
Yep, to be crafted?
No, it's in your package.
Oh, it is?
So it's in the package.
Oh, it, it, it would have been helpful to have some of this information prior to the meeting because then that would have answered my question.
It was all sent to you last week.
It was?
It should have been in the agenda.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, it's, you got it?
What, you just handed us today was online?
No, it's in your package that you received last week when you were, sent the agenda and the attachments.
Okay, I didn't see. Oh, my apologies then.
Oh, no problem at all. I just wanted to point out that in the full resolution that you're voting on tonight, you're voting to, if you do, there's a referendum resolution, which there's two things. You'll be voting to approve sending it to referendum in conjunction with the election. And it has the ballot question in that resolution as it'll appear on the ballot. And then tonight, if you do approve it to go to referendum, you'll also be approving for the city clerk to prepare explanatory text, um, to be distributed to, uh, taxpayers, however you want. It can be on the website. It doesn't necessarily have to be a mailer. Um, but that, that explanatory text, um, can be provided to taxpayers giving more information about the project.
And, and that explanatory information be given out prior to the?
Yes, if the, if you approve to have explanatory text prepared, it needs to be prepared in time to go out with, um, all, um, absentee ballots will get the explanatory text. The city will be able to post it wherever they want. You can post it on your boards. You could post it on your website. If you have one of those communication blast emails that goes out, you can put it there. Um, in addition, the day, well, now it's not just the day of the election, but even for early voting, um, at the places of voting, there has to be posters, um, with the explanatory text also. And the explanatory text is governed by the election laws. It can provide factual information. Um, so for example, if you wanted to, um, provide more information about maybe the change in the project or impact on mill rates, those kind of things. Uh, as long as it's factual and as long as the city isn't, uh, advocating for or against the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions?
Attorney Dawson, uh, Counselor Iveyne here, just asking, is it, uh, on other similar projects, if you're within 2% of the building costs, uh, do these other communities go out to a new referendum on that small of an increase?
Yes, um, so, uh, every municipality that our firm represents, I can speak for all of my partners, um, and the approximately 100 that we represent, um, anything that goes to referendum, if the project cost is increased, regardless of how it's going to be funded, um, then the voters need to approve it in the same manner, um, as, as the original project. So a couple of the questions I asked when this came up is, one, are you going to be spending more than 179, 575, 179 million, 575,000? And the answer was yes. So at that point, the voters do need to, you know, approve the appropriation. I'll give you an example. The town I live in, we were building a senior center and we got a grant from, um, an estate. And, uh, there was actually a lawsuit about it because we didn't, our town didn't at the time, uh, plan to go to referendum to increase the cost of the senior center by the amount of the, the grant money that was coming in from, uh, an estate that someone left the money to the, to the town. Um, and so, you know, it's just an example of that, if you're going to increase the cost, the voters need to know, uh, that they're voting for that, even if it doesn't cost them any more money.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms., uh, Councilwoman Spino.
Um, first, I just want to say thank you to the Building Committee. I know how much work you've put into it. I sat on the Board of Ed for a few years. Um, I know how we budgeted for the turf field that we have right now. Talk into this a little bit more. Um, and I understand the cost savings from having a turf field compared to having a grass field. I sat on the Board for the Torrington Warriors for many years. I know the expenses that we had for mowing the lawn, lining the field, irrigation, um, fertilizer, grass seed, I know. And the time that it takes to go out there and maintain those fields as well. So I appreciate everything that you're doing and, um, you know, the opportunity to have a turf field there. And I know there is going to be a cost savings. We're going to be putting money away. Um, instead of spending that $90,000 every year on maintaining grass fields, we could put that $90,000 away towards the future replacement and repair of any turf fields. But in full transparency to the taxpayers, I do feel that it's important we go to referendum. And, um, they know where we're spending our money. But, um, I do appreciate all the work that you've done. And, um, I look forward to seeing what the voters have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Trab.
Okay, so I gave it my final thought. And I appreciate everybody making their comments. And I understand why there's a need to go out to referendum so the taxpayers can be the final deciders on it. Um, it has been my experience, however, though, that voters tend to not stay very informed. If something comes out to them and says, by the way, this referendum is not going to cost you another dime. It's not going to be another increase in your mill rate in the future, so on, so forth, that they will overwhelmingly vote in favor of it, which it would be their decision. However, um, that being said, given the past experiences, I would say most people do not inform themselves and they expect those that are either elected to sit on boards to be the people to make those decisions for them. Um, in this case, I know it's going to go forward to referendum. I just don't feel comfortable because I don't think in the end, the taxpayers or the voters who go out to this are going to read all the information, are going to be sitting on these boards five years from now, trying to make those difficult decisions about where the money's going to come from. Um, and they rely on us to keep our costs down and to keep their taxes down. Um, so in that vein, I know it's going to go to referendum. I understand why it has to go to referendum, but I'm, I'm not in favor of it.
So I'm going to turn your statement into a question to Attorney Dawson. Did we lose her?
No, I'm here.
Oh, good, okay. So, um, I'm hearing the question Ms. Trab has with regard to, um, doing our best efforts to, um, explain this to the voters. Can we bring the explanatory text to the boards so that they get to see it before it's approved and released?
If you'd like to, there's nothing prohibiting you from doing that. I do just want to, again, stress that explanatory text needs to be factual. Um, and, you know, to the best of your ability because you're expending city funds to prepare it. Um, and it can't advocate for or against the project. However, I will say, though, regarding that, that any official has, in their personal capacity, has the right to make any statements they want. You know, if someone wants to do a, um, a letter to the editor or whatever, you can, as long as you're not expending city funds to make that communication. There were, you know, we have, I have a lot of clients that think that they can't say anything about a project because there's like this silent period. And it's, it's not true. You, I mean, you're taxpayers too. You can say whatever you want. Um, you just can't expend city funds to get that message, whatever messages you want to get out there.
Okay, so we'll get the explanatory text before the boards.
Understood. I, I just know from the school building project, there were several conversations over the past year or so that they didn't realize, had they had known. Oh, I didn't realize had I had known. Obviously, the Building Committee did an amazing job of getting the information out to the public about this building project ahead of time. You know, they had, they had public groups going out and, and, you know, talking to parents and taxpayers. And still, yeah, I kept hearing from, you know, people who've been here a long time. Oh, I had no idea that this was going to affect our mill rate so much. I had no idea. Clearly, it was, it was put out there that it was going to, but I don't think people really realize it. And that's my fear. It's only, it's only a fear that, you know, and we know that. People, most of the time, don't get involved in this kind of stuff. They leave it up to the powers that be. And then in the end, they go, oh my gosh, I didn't realize this would have happened to us. That's my only fear is they'll come back later, five years down the road, 10 years down. And say, oh, I had no idea that, that that was going to happen to us, even though we did put out explanatory information about the building project afterwards. People say, oh, I wouldn't have voted for it. I didn't know that was going to happen. So that's my only fear is, is in how involved people get in these type of community projects. And a lot of them don't, unfortunately, and then it bites them later on, so. But I appreciate that, that would go out ahead of time. Okay.
I do want to say, um, this, if this, this is Sandra Dawson, again, if I could speak. The Torrington project has, it got a little bit complicated, um, in that the original authorization for the 159 million, whatever it was, 159, 575, you know, didn't have a high reimbursement rate. And so all the mill rate impact, uh, data was put out. However, when the city approved the additional 20 million, at the same time, the state legislature brought the project to 85% reimbursement for all eligible costs. So the original communication that was put out, um, in fact, you know, was an overestimate because you were able to get legislative action taken. Um, so it's, it's difficult, um, you know, to now say, well, this is the mill rate impact as a result of this referendum. I think that you can put out what the entire project now is going to look like. Um, you could also say to people, okay, the project's estimated to cost 185 million, 575,000, and we're expecting this much in grants and the final cost to the city is going to be X. You know, there's different ways you can do it.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Pesky.
To, to your point, I think it is incumbent on us to watch out for the taxpayers' money. And that's what we're doing here by using an 85% reimbursement that is unheard of to improve Torrington's schools and fields. And, and, no, it's not a building, but we all know that the kind of, of that athletics keeps students in school and helps students with their lives after school, be it college, being, uh, going into, to the military or wherever, because we all know what coaches and being a, a part of a team can do. Um, that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, last call for questions from the boards. All right, then I would like to move into item number two. This will be a roll call vote to the members of the Board of Finance. Uh, and the motion is, uh, to adopt Resolution Number 143-252, amending Resolutions 143203A and 143223, previously approved on May 21st, 2020, and December 20th, 2021, by approving an additional $6 million appropriation and no additional bond authorization for outdoor athletic facilities to be included in the current THS TMS construction project and recommending approval of Resolution Number 143-253 to the Board of Councilmen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Pesky? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wright. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call this roll call. Mr. Bayes?
Aye.
Ms. Iannasito?
Aye.
Ms. Pesky?
Aye.
Ms. Trab?
No.
And Mr. Wright?
Aye.
All right, so the ayes have it. Moving into item number three, again, a roll call vote by the Board of Councilmen to accept the recommendation of the Board of Finance and adopt Resolution Number 143-253, amending Resolutions Number 143204 and 143224, approved on June 15th, 2020, and December 20th, 2021, by approving an additional $6 million appropriation and no additional bond authorization for outdoor athletic facilities to be included in the current THS TMS construction project and to submit the resolution for approval or disapproval by the electors of the city at a referendum pursuant to Section C 13-9 of the City Charter and held in conjunction with the general election on November 5th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Thank you, Mr. Walden.
Second.
And second by Mr. Iveyne. And are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call this, uh, roll call. I want to make sure that I have my fourth council member. Is Mr. Oliver here? Yes, good, okay. Mr. Oliver?
Aye.
Ms. Spino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Spino, I'm sorry, Councilman Iveyne?
No.
Councilman Walden?
Oh, yes.
All right, so the ayes have it. This motion passes and there being no further action before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes. Second by Mr. Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're adjourned. Um, thank you, Attorney Dawson. I appreciate your being on the call.
My pleasure.
We do still have a quorum. So we do still have our quorum for city council members. Um, thank you for hanging in. At this point, I'd like to call to order the regular city council, WPCA, regular meeting Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. We have a quorum of council members participating in person and via Zoom for the record. Councilwoman Waldron, Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino are attending in person in the auditorium and participating via Zoom. I have Councilwoman Oliver. So it is now 6:30, 8:00 PM and I'll call this meeting to order and I'll open with item number one. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time? So to the podium and just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Skaya, 187 Lover's Lane, Unit Number Eight, Country Woods condominiums. And I'm here tonight, as all my neighbors are, to address the council regarding a notice we received about a week ago from a solar energy company, Loadstar Energy. And basically what it said is it was just out of the goodness of their heart that we were receiving this notice and that they would be building a three megahertz, megawatts, megawatts, uh, solar farm right behind our condominiums on land that at this point is all trees. Well, the neighbors all heard about it, thought about it, and everyone has very strong feelings one way or another about solar farms, in addition to the fact that we live about a mile and a half downhill from the enormous solar farm that went on in the farmland up the top of Torrington near Litchfield. Not Silo Drive, but I think you all know, top off of Allen Road. So we were upset, uh, to say the least. We pulled together a meeting with Loadstar Energy who came and spoke to us regarding, uh, the problems that we felt were going to be incurred through this. And we're here tonight. We know that our city council is our voice and we don't have as mighty a voice with the Connecticut Siting Committee who will make this decision. So we come to you and we ask you to see our concerns, our, our worries and to help us preserve the western part of Torrington, which is now becoming very deforested. Um, and hopefully people will have things to show you. We do have a map that we blew up to, um, eight by, three by two or something like that, that will show you and it's always easier to see what's coming down. We know for a fact that there are 12 acres approximately of trees going to be cut down. We know for a fact that it's three megawatts. Um, and we know for a fact that Hamden's residents disputed the decision to do this and with the help of their mayor and city council, they were able to convince the Connecticut Siting Committee to, um, to not build. Now that may come back up in the future, but again, as we say, you're our voice and so we're here for you. Um, and the only few things that I really wanted to bring up, I just kind of want to get things started is it's too much land to lose. It's too much of a beautiful habitat for our animals that are up there. And it's, it's too close to us for this kind of proposition. The other, um, we visited the other two solar farms. I don't know if there's more than two in Torrington, but two seems to be enough. It's our duty and we did it. How many more do we have to take Torrington land from to do something ecologically smart when we're paying a price in another way? Which is pretty much what a quote from the mayor of Hamden said, you know, I believe in solar energy, but we've got to be smarter about this. We, we got to use, uh, tops of buildings and, and dirt fields. We can't be using good farmland. We can't be taking down our forests. That's what people come to the Goshen Fair for. So I just kind of wanted to get that going. I know I have three minutes. But I guess what we're asking is if you will listen to us tonight, we'd appreciate that. We will follow through on speaking on the, um, state website. We'll send our information and we'll tell them what we think. But if you find it in your hearts from what you hear tonight to maybe advocate for us by sending some kind of a, a letter into the council, you may get us just that much further. And pretty much that's it. And just a consideration, fire trucks can't go over Country Woods, our little bridge. So if we had something happening in that field behind our condos, how is the fire trucks going to get to us? They have to go up Highland Avenue and come back down. It's a risky proposition for our homes and for the rest of that area. Excuse me. I love microphones. Okay, and that's pretty much all I really wanted to say. Please see it in your heart tonight to hear some of these words and again, even if it takes, if you guys can just do this and get us closer to maybe having a positive scenario. And I, I feel like two solar farms in Torrington, it's enough, it's a lot. So I'm not sure how much more we have to give, but I hate giving up Torrington. Okay, born and bred Torrington High School, came back to teach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ayane.
Thank you.
The floor is still open. Members of the public wishing to address the council? And it's okay if all of you are speaking to the same. Maybe, um, instead of listening to three minutes from everybody, um, just an acknowledgement who's in the room to speak to Ms. Skaya's request, you know, and then that way you, for any of you that are afraid to speak in public.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to a point that I spoke to last week. And that was, when you have a slope, if it's 11 degrees, power can't stop with ice. It's, it's going to keep on going downhill. And this is going to be set up at 15 degrees. The land is at 15 degrees. So you've got a pretty good slope built in there. And if you have trucks or whatever you need there, that could be a problem. The other item I spoke to dealt with trees. As a kid growing up, I was taught that a large tree out in the middle of a field could suck up the leaves and all, could suck up 300 gallons of water a day. And, um, that's our balance. That's, um, an economical balance. And they said something about, well, we're putting in fields where the water can stay and but with all the trees they have that they're cutting down, that's a, a lot of water to take care of and Torrington's had enough trouble with a lot of water coming down its rivers and we really don't need anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. Did he say his name? No.
I didn't.
I know, please, if you could.
Emily Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the floor is still open for anyone wishing to make comment? Get coming up. Just state your name when you get here, if you don't mind.
Hi, I'm Denise Sheedy. I live at Country Woods. I'm really nervous because the hill up there goes down like this and it runs into the park. That's on Riverside Avenue, which floods already. If we, if we get rid of 17 acres of trees, what's that going to do in the water when the runoff comes down? And also the construction that it's going to take to remove all those trees, the noise every single day, the pollution from the big trucks with their diesel is just very upsetting. I want to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Elaine Kolesha, Unit 78 at Country Woods. Couple of bullet points I'd like to bring out. While solar panels don't necessarily admit radiation, there is EMF waves, which in some people that are very sensitive can get headaches and vision issues. And you're also going to drive our wildlife out. They're not going to stay in an area where there is this energy. They're going to move on and we have a beautiful place with lots of animals and they want to take down 14.9 acres of trees and fauna. And in this area, that's a lot. And stop and think about vegetation is oxygen. You take those trees down and you put in black panels and they create more heat and generate crisping bugs that land on them. You know, all the stuff that's important to our environment. And if these panels are broken in a storm, while the panels themselves don't create a toxic issue, the metals in the wiring and the condensers can create reproductive harm in people and cause cancer issues in people. So it's not just the panels, it's what they're put in with. And you're not talking about five or six homes on a country road. You're talking about 80 homes at Country Woods. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Elaine Ackerman, Unit 75. I'm going to talk about this, I think it's approximately over 7,000 panels that are going to be installed. From what I understand, it's going to be approximately about 145 feet from the border of the property. Mayor Carbone and council, thank you for gathering today to allow the residents of Torrington to address concerns regarding the Loadstar Solar Panel Farm Project. A topic that has gained increasing attention in recent years is the potential dangers associated with the solar panel farms and the ongoing research surrounding electromagnetic fields, also known as EMF, and their possible links to cancer. Solar power has emerged as a leading contender as we navigate the challenges of climate change and the urgent need to transition to renewable energy sources. It is clean, abundant, and essential for sustainable future. However, like any technology, solar panel farms have complexities and considerations warranting our attention. Establishing large solar farms, farms requires significant amounts of land, which can lead to habitat destruction and loss of biodiversity. These developments can disrupt local ecosystems affecting flora and wildlife, potentially leading to long-term environmental consequences. The manufacturing process of solar panels involves hazardous materials, including cadmium and silicon. If not managed properly, these substances can pose environmental risks by contaminating soil and water sources. Furthermore, as solar panels reach the end of their life cycle, we face waste management and recycling challenges as many panels are not easily disposed of or recycled. And while solar energy is renewable, it is not always reliable. Energy production is contingent upon sunlight availability, leading to energy storage and grid stability challenges. Overreliance on solar energy might inadvertently compromise energy security, especially in regions where sunlight is not abundant year round. The shift towards solar farms can lead to conflicts over land use, particularly in rural areas where agricultural land is repurposed for energy production. And local communities may face economic disruption or displacement sparking tensions among stakeholders. Now let us turn our attention to the topic of EMFs and their relationship to human health, particularly concerning cancer risk. And many of us may not be aware that solar farms and many aspects of modern technology emit EMF. Various sources produce EMF fields, including power lines, appliances, and wireless communication devices. And while the science of EMFs is complex, it is essential to distinguish between the low-frequency EMFs and the high-frequency radiation like that from X-rays. Numerous studies have been conducted to evaluate the potential health effects of EMF exposure, including its correlation to various forms of cancer. The World Health Organization and expert committees have often concluded that while some studies suggest a possible link between high EMF exposure and certain cancers, the evidence at this time is not conclusive. Most research indicates that typical exposure levels, such as those experienced near solar farms, are considerably lower and thus likely less to pose significant health risks. Adopting a precautionary approach is advisable despite the lack of definitive evidence linking EMF exposure from solar farms to cancer. And ongoing research is crucial. We must remain vigilant about potential health impacts.
I apologize, I know. You're over three minutes. Are you reading that? Because if you are, would you leave it?
Yes, I can.
And absolutely, if you could leave it.
Can I just do the last one?
Please, yeah.
I urge you to approach the Loadstar Solar Panel Farm Project with a critical yet open mind. Let us advocate for sustainable practices in renewable energy production while continuing to research and understand the potential health impacts of EMF. And by doing so, we can harness the power of the sun in a way that protects both our environment and our health.
Thank you very much. Yeah, if you leave that with the clerk, she can copy it. Make sure the council members all get a copy. Thank you very much. I, I appreciate your cooperation. All right, the floor is still open. Anyone else wishing to address the council? On this or any other matter?
Hi, my name's Terrence Nolan. Um, I'm with Loadstar Energy. I just wanted to, um, let folks know that I'm, I'm here and, um, we had a chance last Tuesday to meet with the neighbors, as they mentioned, at the condominium association building and had a lively Q and A discussion for about two hours. And the chief concerns, which some of which you're hearing tonight include safety of the, what the panels consist of, visibility, uh, as well as stormwater. So those would be the three key things that, among others, and I know tree removal and wildlife impacts are there as well. We're, um, committed to coming up with ideas to mitigate the concerns that are impacting the neighbors, um, including the potential for planting trees, uh, to, uh, for visibility between the solar array and the residents. So we're open to that and are interested in doing visual simulations to try to demonstrate that. Also, from a stormwater perspective, we are abiding by the new deep standards, which are actually more, um, rigorous than they were even a year ago, um, so that there should be a net benefit to the neighbors from a stormwater perspective and that will be evaluated by independent engineers, not, not just our own engineers. But really just to say from Loadstar, which is based in Avon, Connecticut and has, manages 40 sites around the Northeast, that we're open to the dialogue, open to continuing to have the dialogue and open to finding ways to try to minimize, minimize the impact on, on the neighbors. So, um, uh, I believe the president of the condo association has my number and I'm, I'm, I'm more than willing to continue to meet on the topic. Appreciate your, uh, listening. Thank you.
Thank you. And the floor is still open. I'm going to already tell you, you're going to have to adjust the microphone so we can catch you.
Hi, my name is Donna. I live at Unit, um, Country Woods. And I'm here because, um, what it comes down to is big dollars versus people living on a fixed income in a community that we love and we live there because of the way it's been structured. That's being taken away from us, which is why I think most of us are here. We see the trees, the beautiful trees surrounding us coming down. We see the order of wildlife being changed. There won't be wildlife over there. They won't be able to live, survive. They won't be able to live, survive, eat in the order of things. Bear and wolves and coyotes and porcupines, wildlife, they're gonna be gone. And then there's going to be water problems because the trees are gone. And then there's going to be a landscape problem because all you're going to see are solar panels as opposed to beautiful trees and flowers. And the value of our homes are going to depreciate because people are coming in, are going to see a landscape of solar panels instead of trees and animals in serenity. We purchased our condos because of the environment we have right now. And that's being changed, and that's why we're here. We're fighting to keep things the way they are. If they weren't the way they are right now, we would not be living there. We would have found another home. That would have made us just as happy or even happier. But that's our home, and it's being destroyed by a gazillion-dollar industry that's going to make more gazillion dollars. And what's it going to do to us? Change everything. And the rates, on top of it all, after everything is destroyed and restructured, on top of it all, our rates keep going up. And a lot of people living in our community have fixed incomes. How are they going to afford all these prices that keep going up and up and up, and they can't afford to live anymore? We need help. We need someone who's more powerful, has a bigger voice than we do, to stand up for us and our home that's being taken away.
Donna, before you leave, your last name for the record? Could we get your last name?
KJERSGAARD.
Okay. Is it helpful? You're gonna be able to spell that?
You want me to spell it?
Would you? Can I buy a vowel? And the floor is still open if there are other questions or comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carol Muro, and I live at Country Woods, Unit Seventy-six. I just have a few words to say about the noise that will result from this solar panel farm. The pollution, the noise pollution caused by each solar panel, and we will have seven thousand five hundred and seventy panels, and their associated equipment, including eighteen inverters, six utility poles, new utility poles which will be erected, and two transformers. It will disrupt our community's peaceful environment. Work is to commence on a six-day-week schedule from seven AM until five PM, Monday through Saturday. Implementing stricter regulations and sound mitigation measures will help protect residents' quality of life. Failure will result in the condominium seeking legal counsel to file complaints against Loadstar, and another expense will occur. There was an article written in 2021 pertaining to a solar farm that was erected in East Windsor. Mayor, you have a copy?
I did forward the copy to all the council members.
Okay, great. This gentleman, his name is Van Steenberg. Okay? When the twenty-nine-acre project on East Road went into operation in late 2021, Van Steenberg immediately heard a constant ringing in the air from electrical equipment at the site. He describes it as an annoying ringing, audible whenever it is sunny, and followed him into his front and backyards. The project, East Windsor Solar One, reveals the limits of what state and local officials can do if problems arise with solar farms once they are in place. The Connecticut Siding Council sets the conditions for their approval, which are enforceable. Nevertheless, the case will enter what appears a very gray area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. Any other questions or comments for the board this evening? All right, so just for all of your information, during this public participation, there is not an exchange between the council members and the public. But I do believe the council has all heard you loud and clear. And I think, Ms. Skyah, the question you were asking was, would the council do anything to go on record regarding this issue? It is not on the council agenda this evening to do so, but the council can certainly let us know if this is something they do wish to take up. And I do believe we have a timeline from which to respond to this. So thank you all very much for coming out. I do appreciate your time and your courage to come and speak publicly.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, moving into item number two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from August nineteenth. Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Waldron. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor? Any opposed? And one abstention for the record is Councilwoman Spino. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Scott Matava to the Fair Rent Commission for a two-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, 2026.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on this appointment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Oliver R. Davis to the Board of Assessment Appeals as an alternate member to fill a vacancy for the term that expires on December fifth, 2024.
No move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Councilwoman Spino seconded. All questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five A, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's appointment of Commissioner Tina Vanini from alternate to voting commissioner to the Services for the Elderly Commission with a term ending July fifth, 2027, to replace Commissioner John Riggs, who has completed his second term.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. And seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments?
Just a quick question. Under reference materials, it says, you know, some stated Sullivan Senior Center Services for Sullivan Senior Center, but is this commission elderly commission? What's the proper terminology for this one?
New sixty-four thousand dollar question. What is it, what's the board? Joel, oh, Joel's on. Joel, do you have an answer? I stepped away from his iPad.
I'm here.
Hi. So the question is, what is the real name of the commission that we're appointing these? Is it the Commission for Elderly? Is it the Sullivan Senior Center Commission?
It is the Services for the Elderly Commission.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. All right. So any other questions on the motion?
Just a...
I'm gonna call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five B, vote to accept the mayor's appointment of Commissioner Janet Risa-DiVie from alternate to voting commissioner for the Services for the Elderly Commission to fill the remainder vacancy of a term ending July fifth, 2025. She will be replacing Commissioner Art Mattiello, who has resigned.
No move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's appointment of Frances Daly to the Services for the Elderly Commission and John Parent to, both, excuse me, to alternate commissioners to fill the remainder of a term ending July fifth, 2025.
No move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six. This is, doesn't require a motion. There will be a presentation, and I see Ray Drew is all queued up, regarding the updated revised recommendation from the City ARPA Committee for approval of the ARPA spending plan as recommended, or excuse me, amended on August twenty-eighth, 2024. Hello, Ray.
Good evening. As you are aware, we received, the city of Torrington received monies under the ARPA plan, the state and local fiscal recovery plan. The city received ten million seventy-five thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy cents. There are certain guidelines that require the city to meet certain obligations and committing the funds. As you can see from the spending plan, the city has done an enormous amount of work with community outreach programs, community impact grants, facade improvement grants, healthcare, medical clinics. So not to, you know, I'm not gonna reiterate all of them. The crux of it is that we met on the twentieth, as the mayor indicated. One of the criterias of the plan is that the funds, all ten million seventy-five thousand three forty-one, be obligated by December thirty-first of 2024. In the webinar by the U.S. Treasury, the obligation means that you must have a contract, an agreement, proposals in place that you are obligating that money. You have designated that money to be spent for a particular service or goods or equipment, whatever is deemed an eligible expense. So to date, the city has expensed four point six-two-three million six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and one cent. Currently, we still have encumbered one million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand four forty-three oh one that we have committed, we have contracts in place. And then additional two thirty-two in the community impact grants that is ongoing is expected to be committed very shortly. So that leaves a balance of three million two hundred and eighty-one thousand fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents that is currently unobligated. So when we met, in order to evaluate the programs, what, you know, what we can get accomplished by the obligation deadline of December thirty-first, 2024, keeping in mind that if we have to obligate it by that date, but we don't have to expend it until December thirty-first of 2026. So really, I just, if you have any questions on any particular item, you can see the highlighted column dated eight twenty-eight twenty-four. And you can see this plan has been revised and resubmitted to the council multiple times. So we're asking the city council to approve the ARPA's city committee spending plan of eight twenty-eight twenty-four. And you have any specific questions or...?
Yeah, Ray, the New World Financial System, can you just talk me through what that does specifically?
Is that the twelve thousand?
Fourteen thousand nine seventy-six?
Yeah, so the New World Financial System is basically our financial system. It's our human resources, and that's where payroll is done. It's where all our bills are paid through. That's where all our audit financial reports are run out of. One of the issues that has continuously come up is that, right now, we have a system that has user-specific licenses. So for the payroll system, for example, and don't quote me on the number of licenses, if they have twenty-five licenses, only twenty-five people can use the system, right? So the intent of the payroll system was to have every department using that system. So it's automated, they enter it. But not every department does that because we don't have enough licenses. So this request is to go to an enterprise license or an unlimited site license so that we can have as many users licensed and use the system as we need. So it's unlimited.
Okay, thank you. And the other one is number four, the building management systems of the senior center, police department, fire departments. Is that heating and air conditioning, or is it a management?
So I will defer to our facilities director, Jameis Akora. That's his project.
Hello, good evening. Yeah, that is a full management system of all the HVAC. Like, we have a system like that currently at City Hall, so I can log into a computer and see how everything is working. I can turn the AC on and off from my phone in this room. So my five-year plan for all the buildings is to get to that in every single building. Right now, we have limited to no visibility in anything. So if something fails at two AM, we don't know about it till the next day. If something fails here, I get alerts. Our HVAC contractor also gets alerts. So it's a way to monitor. It also helps saving energy because now I can see things that are about to fail before they fail, and it just gives you a viewpoint of everything within the building, as well as autonomous control.
Are we retiring a system to do this?
In this one, yes, at the police department. It's an antiquated, outdated system that was installed in nineteen ninety. So it's way beyond useful life, and it's not worth putting money into that system anymore. So in that one building, it would be rip out and put in new. But again, WP say it already has a system almost a hundred percent installed right now. So this is marrying off of that, where we'll get to one system for all the city instead of a multitude of different systems, different vendors.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the benefit that you have from the building management systems, it allows you a tighter control of how your building's operating. So, for example, if he sets the building, it's seventy-two degrees, the system tries it. You don't have people going to their thermostat in their office and trying to crank it up to eighty or turn on the air conditioning. So you have much tighter, and that just leads to more energy efficiencies.
It also stops simultaneous heating and cooling, which happens a lot. So you're cold, you want the heat on. It's hot, they want the AC on. Building's doing both, wasteful of energy and...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, good idea.
Other questions on the plan? So this is item number six. What I'll be looking for is an approval of the strategic spending plan as it was amended as of August twenty-eighth. And then item seven will do some specific expenditures. We're ready to move the approval? Okay, good. So the motion I'm looking for is an approval to, a motion to approve the strategic spending plan as amended on eight twenty-eight, 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, now we're going to move into item seven. And these will be the expense approvals that we're ready to move on.
That is correct. That we have proposals, they should be in your packets, that we are ready to execute with your authorization.
So, I'll take these in the order that they appear. I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA committee, the comptroller, and the IT director to upgrade the New World Financial System to an unlimited site license. This is going to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $14,976 to be funded by ARPA GL account 0284-8888-590000. Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Second by Councilman Ivyane. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA committee, the police chief, and IT director to award the replacement of eight laptop computers off CTDAS contract 23PSX0163, to Telrepco in the amount of $42,840, again to be funded by the ARPA GL account previously read. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second by Councilman Ivyane. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA committee and the WPCA administrator to approve payment application number one for the Brightwood Avenue sewer replacement project to Yield Industries in the amount of $190,836 to be funded by ARPA.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
That's moved by Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Any questions or comments?
What's the total, is that the total cost of the project?
No.
Yeah, the attachment has the total.
Oh, it was in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Bayrec application should have the contract total.
Yeah.
On the first line.
Yeah, I see it now. Thank you. Sorry.
No, that's fine. Nope.
Yeah, this is the first application in the spending plan you just approved, $750,000, and was set aside for sewer improvements.
Okay.
So this is just only a portion of the, that will be back within the next one, until we spend $750,000.
And that's always been our strategy. While you might approve a full sum, we also bring, always bring it back to the council to make sure they understand where that full sum goes.
Yeah, great.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of ARPA committee and facilities director to award the installation and/or replacement of the building management system at the senior center police department, fire department, LCD off, all of this is coming off the CTDAS contract 23PSX0243CA, payable to Air Temp Mechanical Services in the amount of $301,050, to be funded by the ARPA GL account. This account is a slightly different number, account 5930, in the amount of $206,000, and Public Works Capital Reserve account 59000112, in the amount of $95,050.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item E, I'll entertain a motion to award a grant in the amount of $10,000. I know the motion reads to Friendly Hands Food Bank and Nautilus Plus Fitness, but I did receive communication from Friendly Hands with a request for a modification to the motion. So what the motion for the record is, to award a grant in the amount of $10,000 to Nautilus Plus Fitness and Tanning Center to assist with business relocation expenses incurred as a result of the sale of their property to Friendly Hands Food Bank. Yeah, that should do it. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, and seconded by Councilman Ivyane. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, I'll entertain a motion to waive the bid process and purchase 23 Franklin Four Station voting privacy booths from sole source provider Inclusion Solutions of Evanston, Illinois, in the amount of $23,766.20. These are using grant funds from the Center for Tech and Civic Life, as further explained in the registered clerk member memo dated August 23rd, 2024.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilman Ivyane. Are there questions? Because I see our registrar is here. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, I'll entertain a motion to utilize state contract number 15PSX0112 for the purchase of the fire department washer extractor from Daniels Equipment Company of Auburn, New Hampshire, to be paid from the fire department capital reserve account in the amount of $23,632. This is, of course, pending board of safety approval.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron and Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments?
Uh, yeah. This is, now, was this replacing a previous unit that was already there? It is an expensive washing machine here.
It is. Well, it is a big guy.
Uh, yes. Our unit is, our first unit was purchased back in 2010, so we got some very good life out of it. Year 2022, we started having issues with it. Spent about just over $2,500 repairing it, and we weren't able to fix it. We're taking it to motherboard. It's a smaller unit. This is back on extractors, first came into the fire service of our, this cleans our turnoff gear from fires, makes all the soot and everything out of it. That's what these are for. That holds two sets. Our current extractor we're purchasing now, it's going to hold six sets. So that's half a shift that can get, a full shift cleaned in one night now, after a major fire.
And what's, what's the life of, projected life?
I'm hoping we get another 15 years out of this one. Long past when I'm gone.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we got, so we got 14 years out of this one. It's still working, but it goes into alarm. We have to babysit it. I talked to Harmington West Side Fire Department, that they have a small one too, so we're going to donate that one to them. They're going to dump more money in to try and repair it, and it'll be a backup for us. We use them now, we use the fire school, Harmington West Side of Winston, as a backup for our big fires, and we need to clean a lot of gear. So this unit will take care of ourselves.
Okay. So we'll only have one at each site? Is that the plan?
We'll have one at headquarters, that's it.
Okay.
That'll take care of us.
But it's a bigger one than what you have now.
Yes, much bigger. They handle, like a Wall Street fire.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions for Deputy Chief? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, I'm looking at the Small Cities requests. And Attorney Magistrally is just sharing with me, the attachments do not have the sums of money that are being approved. Did Small Cities go through this early? Okay, good.
Yeah, Dan's still here. Dan explained it.
Okay.
That two of the projects are for preapproval.
Okay.
Because there's special circumstances, and so they have to be approved by the state or somebody. So Dan can...
Two of these projects, the circumstances are a little unusual, that they're normally not covered under this particular program through the state, but they can always ask if the state would approve it. So this has gone to the board for them to take a look at it, and offer a, perhaps offer a preapproval, so that it can then be presented to the state for approval. So in one particular instance here, the individual is, she has...
Asthma.
Health concern. Health concern. And requires oxygen, and she lives in an area that gets a lot of power failure. So she's concerned, it's a matter of life or death, and they feel that normally a house generator is not covered under this particular program, but they think perhaps in this circumstance it may be. So it's something that would be preapproved or moved forward from the Small Cities Committee and the city council, to A&E Services who handles these. They'll present it to the state. The state will then make a determination on whether they feel it would meet their standards, would then come back to Small Cities and city council for approval with all the information you need at that time.
This makes sense, because when I met with the purchasing agent this morning, she also said that she was looking at these and said there were no bids on any of these, so she was confused as well.
Right.
Okay.
There's two of those projects that are, fall under that category this year.
Okay. So in the motion, can we identify what those are? Excuse me, and that this is a preapproval of the intent of the grant pending state approval? Does that make sense? All right. So, Hodges Hill is one of those. So what I would be looking for is a motion on the recommendation of Small Cities to offer preapproval of the installation of an auxiliary generator at 26 Hodges Hill Road, pending state Department of Housing approval.
So move.
I had that motion.
So move.
All right, so I heard Councilman Oliver, and I heard Councilwoman Spino. All right, questions or comments on the motion?
Well, we have Dan here, just, we ended with a surplus on a small city grants last year. Is that true, in the last fiscal year?
So, so what happens is, you know, as people pass away, or sell the property, those funds come back to the city to offer more loans.
Yeah.
So what's happened is, there's been a substantial amount of those that increased our asset list. So we were given in 2018, we were given $400,000 grant to facilitate these loans. Since 2018, we've only been able to utilize $200,000 of that $400,000, because every time we go to spend some more money, someone else pays off the loan. So, we're at the point now where we're having a difficult time expending those funds, because our asset list continues to grow. So, those funds will be going back to the state, the $200,000 that we're not using, because it's perpetuating itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think the way to look at that is, what the state gives us, those are grant funds that are granted out. What we receive paid back to us after the loans are repaid is program income, and we are required to spend that program income first.
Right.
All right, so the motion was made and seconded. Any other questions before I call it? Then I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. All right, 64 Albany, Albany, is this also one of those we're waiting for approval?
It is.
Okay, all right. So the motion would be the same, on recommendation of the Small Cities Committee, I'll entertain a motion to preapprove the replacement of the house and garage roof and gutters, installing a new garage overhead door, and replacing the garage floor or slab at 64 Albany Street, pending state or Connecticut Department of Housing approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Ivyane. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then item 12. So this is a cost estimate, and when Penny said that she doesn't recall this being put out to bid, is it, will it go out to bid after this is approved? I mean, I'm not sure.
So, number 12 we're talking about?
Yeah.
Wyegel. So in this particular instance, this individual had an insurance policy that was due for renewal. They sent a representative out there, which I guess they're doing now, to do inspections at the residences. When they got there, they discovered that the roof needed a repair, and that they told the homeowner that they would have until October 1st to remedy the situation, or they would cancel their insurance policy.
So this is an emergency?
So this, this is an emergency situation?
Okay.
Where the individual does, does qualify financially, so it's up to Small Cities Committee whether they want to, you know, move this project forward.
All right, then I'm going to read that into the motion too, if that's all right with the committee. All right. So then the motion I'd be looking for is on recommendation of the Small Cities Committee, vote to approve the emergency replacement of the roof and gutters at 29 Wyegel Road, with an estimated cost of between $15,000 and $16,000, not to exceed $16,000?
That's an estimate.
Is that comfortable?
Yeah, well, you never know what it's going to come in at.
I know. Do we want to, do we want to put a "not to exceed," or?
Well, you always have to take into account, once they start removing their shingles, if there's underlayment or plywood, and, you know, needs to be replaced, it's always an additional cost, you know, above the low bidders. But, I mean, that's...
If you set a "not to exceed"...
$20,000?
$20,000. And that way, if it goes above that, it's not to say that it couldn't be done, but it could come back to the council for approval for the overage. All right, so, I'll read that motion again. To approve the emergency replacement of the roof and gutters at 29 Wyegel Road, at a sum not to exceed $20,000.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Ivyane. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion by the city council, acting here and as a water pollution control authority, to enter into a five-year installment plan agreement with Mahala LLC to facilitate their payment of the capacity reserve fee of $15,000 due WPCA. This is with a 5% interest rate. Their monthly payments will be $283.07 after a 14% down payment of $2,500. The assessor's record identifies the property as 775 Main Street. Property owner is Mahala D LLC. MAP block, lot numbers 120004005. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to award the purchase of two Trek electric bikes to Benadorm Bikes of Canton, Connecticut, in the amount of $11,799.90, pending approval from the Board of Public Safety. This funding for this purchase will be from the Police Department Capital Reserve account, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated August 28th, 2024.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Ivyane. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the replacement of the radio repeater located at University Drive to Marcus Communications of Manchester, Connecticut, in the amount of $24,065.50, pending Board of Public Safety approval. This purchase will be funded from the Police Department's Capital Reserve, as further explained in the police chief's letter dated August 28th, 2024.
I'll move.
Second.
Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments?
Just a quick question. Say, we get the new radio system in place, does this get discarded, or does it can continue to be used?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed in Corporation Council's memo dated September 3rd, 2024. Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list dated September 3rd, 2024.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated in the list dated September 3rd, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 18, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else? Anything else from the Treasurer's Office, Mr. Farley?
Thank you.
Anything from the P C A, Mr. Towsie? Public Works? Thank you. Facilities? And Fire Department?
Thursday is, is locals' NDA Boo Drive, you see them around town on Thursday. September eleventh, we're having our ceremony, our annual ceremony at the Northland Station, all welcome to attend. And September twentieth, Fire Department versus Police Department fundraiser softball game for Parks and Rec.
Oh. Safe to pay for attendance, you can't bet on anybody. Thank you. Anything? Joel's still on the line, Joel, and he's on video too. Anything this evening, Joel?
Absolutely. Just wanted to throw in there that September is Senior Center Month. We have a ton of stuff going on for our community down at the Sullivan Center, and I would encourage any of our council members to pick up a copy or see it online of our newsletter and check out all the things that we have going on. And a very exciting month, tons of things for everybody and just very proud of what we're accomplishing down there, wanted you to take a look.
Well said, thank you, Joel. City Clerk's Office. It is. I photocopied the last explanatory text for the first two referendums, and when I was rereading them, I was like, yeah, it's clear only if known. You're right, the average person doesn't even know how to read those. Yeah, that's well said. Corporation Council, anything?
Yeah, that's a great segue. I usually don't have much to say because the office is so busy, but I will plant the seed. You know, when I accepted Mayor Carbone's invitation to take the job, I told her I would finish this term with her, and then even if she ran again and won, I'm, I'm done. So December twenty-twenty-five. So what I'd like the council to think about in the meantime is having the Corporation Council's office have also an assistant corporation counsel. I, based on the, my experience just since December, that office certainly could use at least another part-time attorney. It's, it's incredibly busy, it's challenging, I'm finding the work rewarding and, and fun, but every day there's a lot to do, and sometimes it's hard to focus on things that need to get accomplished, because things come in last minute and really quickly. So anyway, I would encourage the council to think about that, next, next budget round, maybe, and I would advocate for at least a part-time assistant corporation counsel, or at least a legal assistant or paralegal or something.
We appreciate the job you're doing, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think in the charter, when it established that we would have corporation counsel that did not have a private practice, worked strictly and solely for the taxpayers, that was decades ago. When I say decades, I mean three decades ago. This job has changed so much, the vast knowledge, that legal knowledge that is necessary to keep everybody, you know, up to speed, I think does require additional lawyer and legal staff. So, yeah, I, I agree, it's a, it's a big job.
Would we need a revision to the charter?
No, I don't think so, because you're still gonna have a corporation counsel, whatever we hire would be an assistant or through the budget process, we could develop a title that would be appropriate.
You just need to pay for it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you. And let's move into item twenty. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
No move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I, we still have Councilman Oliver on the line, anything this evening, Councilman?
No, no, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Iveyne?
I do wanna make some comments on the solar installation. First, I'm surprised that the model they're using, I thought, was Sunset back in twenty-fifteen. That many, even our state was introducing regs that would not do, like, clear out big spaces like this. That, that was more the edges of fields and so not to take agricultural lands. The parts that we started seeding in reaction to the big solar projects was that things like hay has more than doubled in cost. So the, the local farmers are wincing a bit at the cost to feed their animals, things like that. So there was high impact on the Rossi Road project with a lot of construction this past year, so it's probably, won't be well received being even closer to this condo complex. But as you know, the complication is appealing to the State Siting Council, which is under some obligations to increase alternative energy sources. And I would think that, from my opinion, and if I could bend everyone's ear, is that this isn't the best way to onboard solar energy. I, I think we have a lot of flat roofs in town that we could add up. I've seen other projects where they're doing parking lots, and it's, it's nice to park underneath the solar panels in the wintertime, charge your car and not have snow on it, things like that. And, you know, over an asphalt parking lot, you know, you're not adding to the heat problem that, that we're realizing with the solar panels. So, and, so a lot of different bases to cover here, if we can encourage some bigger businesses to help offset electrical usage with solar panels, I, I think it'd be a win-win for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Waldron, anything this evening?
Nothing from me, Mayor, thanks.
All right, then I'm gonna move into item twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion to consider, excuse me, to open the meeting to the public to comment on agenda items only.
No move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public, oh, our public is Lorraine. Anything this evening? All right, then I'm gonna move into item twenty-two, there being no further business before the board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Thank you. Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all very much.